I got it.
Back from vacation, huh?
Yeah.
You look relaxed.
Let's get yours. He's not, he's not. Got one fixed, turned it on and another one broke. Yes. Of course, that part had to be ordered. Um, sorry to hear that. And three quarters functional up there. It's better than none. Yeah.
Better than half even.
It was none for a couple of weeks.
Way better than none.
I'd like to call the Finance Committee, Committee of the whole of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners to order and join me in the
By the United States of America, and to the Bible which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam, first of all, please.
Commissioner Weber, Commissioner Sambell.
Here.
Commissioner Jowzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Engler.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Swainy.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
All present, Mr. Vice Chairman, except for Commissioner Weber.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Up next is approval of the agenda. We'll start with general public comments on agenda items only. Uh, we have three presentations, one from the folks at Community Mental Health. A presentation on harm prevention from the Central Michigan District Health Department. And Michigan State University Extension Annual Report. So three really good presentations today. We've been looking forward to them and thank you folks for coming. Uh, we have no appointments to boards or commissions. Under committee reports, we have uh nine items of business total. Uh, we have no government affairs, no administrative controller issues, uh, no unfinished business, no new business. Uh, we'll have general public comment open to any topics. Uh, people would like and then announcements and then adjournments and all of that. Is there a motion to approve each of them?
So, support.
Jowzinski.
Moreno.
Moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We have a agenda. And up next is general public comments on agenda items only. Okay, so no one for general public comments. We'll move right into reports. Uh, Community Mental Health for Central Michigan, presentation Brian Crowman, Executive Director and Jen McNally, CMHM Isabella County Chief Clinical Officer. Hello, morning, morning, morning for having us. This is a time of year when we get to come and talk a bit about our agency and the work that we do both broadly so along and locally. Go over a few items and then I'll turn it over to Jen to talk about new services here in Isabella County. As Commissioner Hope said, I'm Brian Crowman. I'm the Executive Director for Community Mental Health for Central Michigan. And with me is Jen McNally. She's our Chief Clinical Officer for Isabella County Services. You know, we've been here in the past and appreciate uh most recently back in May, uh, talking about some initiatives that are taking place at the state level and I'll touch on that in just a moment. But overall, our agency is a six county community mental health agency. In addition to Isabella County, we uh cover Claire, Gladwin, Macosta, Midland and uh Claire Gladwin, Macosta, and Midland Counties. And we thank you for your strong partnership here, particularly in Isabella County. Uh, CMH provides a comprehensive array of services in the annual report that I handed out. You know, our mission is just that, to help individuals uh experience community inclusion, full participation through comprehensive uh quality services. And in my uh letter uh for the annual report, in the middle paragraph, I really reflect on that in terms of just the full array of services that our agency provides, which uh Jen will speak of it too more uh in detail. But I think an impressive uh array of services to help individuals and support the vulnerable uh members of our uh society in our area here. And this is something that uh as I'll talk to is uh in a state of uh uncertainty and a threat as we face some of the issues that are going on at the state with what is called the PIHP or prepaid inpatient health plan procurement. Uh, and so last when I was here, I spoke that MDHHS had issued its plan to do a competitive bid out of uh the PIHPs across the state. Currently, there are ten regions in the state, uh one PIHP for each of those regions. Uh, and the state is indicating that their intention is to reduce that from ten regi- or from ten regions to three regions, a northern region, a central region, and a metro region. And uh this board, uh and I appreciate this, uh passed a resolution in opposition to that effort. Uh, our mental health board as well, number of our other counties have also, the Michigan Association of Counties has come out in opposition to it largely from the perspective that it uh has uh a potential to really diminish local representation, local control, and transparency in regard to the issues that are faced. If these PIHPs are large organizations, they can be uh nonprofit entities, they can be entities that really are headquartered from other states across the country. Um, and so it's really raises the question about that local voice. Uh, and that's a concern. And it really can have an impact to diminish the role of community mental health agencies. Uh, community mental health agencies hold a special place as described in the Michigan Mental Health Code. And uh this effort seems to uh treat CMH agencies as just one of any other provider agency that a new PHP could contract with. The request for proposal uh criteria does require that these potential new PHPs contract with a CMH. But it doesn't give any indication of just how much, meaning I said, you know, fulfill the letter of the law and have a contract, but then have a host of other contracts that again may diminish uh the services that we're able to provide. Most notably though is a lot of the community partnerships and you know, appreciate folks that are here this morning to speak to uh different aspects with respect to services with our county. And that's the kind of collaboration and partnering that community mental health agencies are really known for uh within all spheres of uh county uh services. So this remains a concern and I wanted to touch on that here this morning. Uh, as it relates to uh the RFP, it is uh due bids are due the end of September, September twenty ninth. So this is really implemented right now. Uh, August fourth was the date that the actual request for proposal detail has come out. So uh, the CMH Association of Michigan uh is engaging with this uh on two fronts. One is to continue to fight this from a legal perspective. There are a number of issues that we believe it to be in violation of state law, uh most notably in the Michigan Mental Health Code and the So- Social Welfare Act. And so there's efforts underway to challenge this and hope for possibly an injunction to uh halt this. But at the same time, uh it's felt that it's necessary to try to structure alternative proposals to be able to submit a bid that would retain the public system. And so those efforts are underway as well in the midst of this. Um, and then uh just lastly touching on uh our budget uh for our agency overall, uh in fiscal year twenty twenty five, you know, that will be soon ending, but we've had a hundred and fifty seven million dollar budget. Again, that's a six county community mental health agency. Here in Isabella County, we have uh forty one point five million dollars. Most of this is funded by Medicaid. Uh, you know, it's probably ninety two percent of our fundings is from Medicaid. And so certainly our eyes and ears are on the federal issues that are going on uh with respect to policy changes and funding changes with respect to uh Medicaid. Isabella County contributes about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars annually to us. That's been the same amount that's been fixed when the counties established uh the uh Community Mental Health Authority. Uh, and so uh we appreciate your support uh in that. Again, it helps with a lot of the things that we can do that aren't covered by Medicaid and that allow us to do a lot of that community partnering and have some creativity about meeting the needs of individuals. So, wanted to just uh give you kind of a brief overview of current happenings. And again, you have the annual report, but I'd like to turn it over to Jen to talk a little bit about some of the specific initiatives and services.
Morning. Um, as Brian mentioned, I'm Jen McNally and the Chief Clinical Officer for Community Mental Health for Central Michigan. I've been with the agency um almost nineteen years. Right into a variety of services over that time. Um, we provide, as Brian mentioned, a number of services within the community including but not limited to case management, outpatient therapy, home-based therapy for children and families. We have a clubhouse service here in Isabella County, twenty four seven crisis services, unemployment services, and psychiatric services. In addition to that, we also have a number of school-based services, uh jail services that I'll talk about um and just general contacts that we do within the community such as presentations, education. So at the current moment, we're serving about one thousand thirty eight individuals. Of that one thousand thirty eight individuals, a hundred and seventy seven of them are living in residential settings, adult foster care homes within Isabella County. Thirty two indicate that they're homeless and about ninety nine have guardians. Um, five hundred and forty one have a primary mental illness diagnosis, while two hundred and fifty three have a primary intellectual or developmental disability diagnosis. And then uh a hundred and nineteen are children with a primary mental illness diagnosis and a hundred and eighteen um are children with a primary um and developmental disability diagnosis. We do recognize um in looking at my presentation from last year, the numbers consumers that we're serving this year is decreased. Um, we recognize a number of factors um in that uh looking at population as well as Medicaid redeterminations and how those are being processed now, as well as uh Medicaid criteria and uh number of individuals no longer qualifying for those benefits. Um, unique to Isabella County, we sir uh provide services to our six county out of catchment team. So we have right now about thirty nine individuals who are uh receiving services for community mental health for Central Michigan, but live outside of our six counties. So we have individuals who live um in the Detroit metro area, Kalamazoo, Battle Creek, all the way up. We just had a consumer who moved just across the bridge. So we have um within the entire lower peninsula. And so we are one of the CMHs that is unique in that we provide staff to serve those individuals, make contact with our agency to make sure that they're receiving the service that they're required to do. Um, and as well, that team also uh provides services and linking and monitoring with any individual in our six counties who's placed in one of the site, state, excuse me, state psychiatric hospitals. So Caro, Kalamazoo, Walter-Ruther, those hospitals. Um, in Isabella County, we do continue to implement a team-based care model of providing treatment to individuals that we've served. We started that um back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, or twenty and twenty twenty one, excuse me. Um, and those teams have remained the same in the last five years, a solid team focus. So we have um one team that is specifically designated to serving children and families. We have one that's specifically targeted towards intellectual and developmental disability consumers. And then we have three that are providing services to adults and children with a mental health diagnosis. Within our children's program, we do have a multi-systemic program or MST program that works very closely with our court system, our juvenile drug court program, as well as juvenile probation. And so this program is designated to assist in juveniles who've been placed in residential treatment, to reintegrate to the community, as well as those who may be at risk of being placed in a residential treatment facility to try to keep them within the community and receive local services. That program is unique in that it has a designation to be able to treat adolescents with problemized sexual behavior. So that's a focus that they've received extensive training to be able to do. Um, and we continue to see a high number of referrals to that program and maintaining um that aspect. Um, I shared last year and we continue to provide a number of groups within our agency within Isabella County um to our community members. So we have our dialective behavioral therapy group, or DPT, which provides services to those that have a diagnosis of borderline personality disorder. So they learn a variety of skill sets to be able to manage that through a cognitive behavioral approach. We continue to offer a co-occurring mental health and substance use um treatment group for those individuals who are receiving our services. We recently in the last year started an anger management program. So that's a doc- uh offer to adults. And also a depression and anxiety group that we've offered to individuals and adults. We see quite a bit of success from offering group models um to individuals so that they can um identify and be with individuals that uh are are having similar uh needs to them. And then we also have offered a number of groups to parents. So our Parenting Through Change, our PTC group, because we like lots of acronyms at CMH, um is offered virtually and in person to be able to assist with dealing with children's behaviors. We have a trauma-informed parenting group, which we call TIP, which is gonna offer virtually and in person. We've, we've offered those hybrid models just because of convenience and being able to get individuals to be able to participate in that. So the TIP group is primarily for individual parents and caregivers who are are dealing with children that have experienced some level of trauma than their like to be able to support them through those trauma symptoms as well as uh treatment. And we partnered last month in July with the Isabelle Child Advocacy Center to offer an abbreviated two-day trauma and parenting group. Um, we did that here at the Commission on Aging to any member of the community. And so they were able to get a grant to be able to support childcare and um food. We always let's bring people to groups. Um, and so we look forward to continuing that partnership and offering those to the community over the next fiscal year as well. And then lastly, we're offering nurturing parenting program, which is another parenting group in just learning different skills to be able to parent children. That group does have some specific focuses with infants, toddlers, preschoolers, uh substance use disorders, um and teen parents. And we're working right now to explore a partnership with the Juvenile Drug Court to offer um a mindfulness um as cognitive behavioral therapy group to individuals within the juvenile drug court program. Um, I mentioned jail services at the beginning. We continue to have a full-time staff working at the jail forty hours a week. Uh, Kyle is the same person that's been providing that for a number of years and continues to do so. Um, so this last fiscal year, he has had one thousand one hundred and thirteen contacts in uh with inmates in the jail. So whether that's he's providing individual therapy services to them or providing group services, he does a variety of both of those. And we continue to partner with the Isabella Substance Awareness Coalition in the backpack program and providing inmate inmates who are being are released from the jail of the backpack full of different items, which could include um fentanyl test strips, Narcan, HIV hepatitis C test uh strips, education, um flyers to connect them to local resources to be able to have them have some connections, make uh release from the jail. Um, this fiscal year, we also provided mental health training to local law enforcement. We trained um a little over seventy um Isabella County law enforcement personnel. We do that over, um, it's a day-long training, but we offer two different segments of that to be able to accommodate for scheduling. Um, so we spend our day doing some educational presentation on mental health diagnosis, de-escalation, officer safety, and what the petition and court order process looks like. We have a little bit of a panel discussion. We have more than one person or just one individual who is a person with mental health, lived mental health diagnosis, who's had interactions with law enforcement and what their experience is like when they were um untreated, as well as what their experiences have been while they've been treated for their mental health condition with law enforcement. And then the afternoon, we've been doing role plays, which is not everybody's favorite, but there's a lot of feedback from it where we have uh a number of different situations that law enforcement may encounter um while working um in the public and with with mental health diagnoses and how to respond to those situations. So we look forward to continuing to do those presentations in the community. And then um our YIS, our school-based staff have um received over seventy five referrals during this last school year for their services. They've provided four different groups and a hundred and sixty eight classroom lessons. They also um received a grant from the Mount Placid Community Area Foundation to do QPR training, which is suicide prevention training. And so they've been able to do six of those trainings over the last fiscal year. Um, we participated in a lo- a number of local boards and community advocacy groups. Um, I won't go through all of those, but I just wanted to wrap up saying that um we uh part of our crisis team is looking at authorizing inpatient psychiatric hospitalization. So um there's a lot to conversation about inpatient psychiatric hospitalization and we authorize the dollars for those individuals in our communities who have Medicaid insurance or no insurance. So this last fiscal year from October first until July thirty first, we had in our county a hundred and twenty three individuals that were in uh inpatients impatiently um psychiatrically hospitalized for a total of one thousand seven hundred and ninety days of hospitalization. Um, within this fiscal year, um, so last fiscal year, excuse me, we had a hundred and eighty eight individuals for a total of twenty threes, uh two thousand three hundred and sixty six days. So we continue to see that pattern um occurring. And so um as I mentioned before, we're still seeing the same barriers with the statewide shortage of inpatient psychiatric hospital beds. So we continue to look for and and resources that we can be able to do. Um, shortage of staff within those units. So they may have beds available, but they don't have enough staff to be able to run those units for the amount of people that they have beds for. And then just also having um difficulties with those units accepting our individuals, just because they have an open bed, doesn't mean that they'll accept that individual into their unit for treatment for a variety of different reasons. Our crisis team has done a phenomenal job um looking at what we call diversion rates. Um, so if an individual comes in requesting inpatient psychiatric hospitalization, we assess that they meet the criteria for that. Um, and if they don't, then we divert them to local services, whether that's our own services internally at CMH, uh well checks, whether that's connected to substance use disorder services, um crisis residential units, which are another uh short-term placement. And so we've actually seen um an increase in our diversion rate. Uh, so right now, we're about seventy eight percent of our screens are being diverted to local services. And the importance of that is really looking at uh inpatient psychiatric is an acute placement. They're just getting a little bit of medication management, but very little treatment. When we connect them to local resources, they have better outcomes and we see less risk for suicide than they're connected to those local resources. Um, and so with that, as an agency, we've diverted um one thousand three hundred and seventy three individuals out of one thousand seven hundred and fifty nine screens that have been completed um in this last fiscal year. So it's a number of screens that our individuals are doing and our crisis team is working to assist the community. That is what.
Questions, Lawrence?
Well, kind of a comment, but also I know that MAC, Michigan Association of Counties, has always worked against this and it was different iterations. And it usually was from outside, not inside department, which I think makes it especially difficult, am I right?
That's correct. That's right. Yeah, we've had other, uh whether it's legislative bills that have been going on, you know, shirky bills in terms of uh you know, a few years back, there was a section two ninety eight, which is budget boilerplate language. So those are different avenues. But here it's coming through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services itself. And so uh, you know, it it's a little challenging to try to, you know, exert, you know, you know, change in regard to this, this effort. But we continue to try to advocate, uh, you know, with a lot of different meetings with a lot of different folks are, uh, you know, Jen's counterpart over in Macosta, Osceola, that was uh Representative Tom Coontz uh yesterday. Great. Meeting and and was, you know, talking about some of the concerns on this. And so, you know, talking with legislators, so it does, you know, can help as well, but.
So people out there that are watching this, they can contact their lawmakers.
Yes, yes.
Issue, right?
Absolutely.
I also wanted to say that in um um Michigan, uh, I mean, mid-state health, we're, we're putting in a bid for one of those.
Yes, uh, there's been a lot of uh activity on what that may look like, but Midstate Health Network is definitely involved in seeking to put something together.
Yeah, and if we want it, we like blow up how many I like double how many counties.
Yeah, Midstate Health Network, yeah, is currently uh covers twenty one counties. It's a large uh region, one of the largest outside of uh, you know, Detroit, Wayne. Um, but the central region is forty four counties. You go more than double. Uh, it's made up of thirty three CMH agencies in that central region. So it's pretty large.
So we're hoping that that is successful.
Yes.
Keep the mission low instead of worrying about profits and so forth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I guess we've heard about these privatization attempts for, for as long as I've been on the board. It's quite a while, I think. But in the past, it's been from groups of legislators, it feels a little more ominous coming from MDHHS. Uh, I'm wondering though, you've mentioned that uh some of the services are not covered by Medicaid or parts of services, or can you explain which ones or which parts of services or?
So if individuals have Medicaid, the majority of their services are are covered. So I mean, when I talk about um variety of different things, case management, outpatient, those are all covered under the Medicaid. Um, so individuals without Medicaid insurance or who have a spend-out Medicaid, which is like having a deductible Medicaid, have some limitations with their services.
Typically, uh, services for individuals who are in jail, because a person is in a jail, doesn't, they lose their Medicaid while they're in jail. So, you know, Jen mentioned our jail, we use that person and we fund that with our general fund, non, non Medicaid dollars.
And our crisis context, not every crisis, every, because we can provide crisis context to anybody in the community regardless of insurance. And so um we don't build private insurances for those services. So anybody could walk in Monday through Friday, um and we would provide crisis services. It's not covered under Medicaid.
So there's still a twenty four seven crisis intervention team?
Yes, that's a requirement from the state. So we have twenty four seven um staff working throughout our six counties.
Uh, and I guess the concern with privatization is are they going to concentrate only on these billable things and and not do, and you mentioned like jail diversion. Wouldn't be billable for, right? Right. Yeah, and you, you know, even, even with that, you know, uh if that is the case where, you know, these private entities only you are funding for those billable services, then it really begins to be wrote that overall infrastructure that an organization has to be able to support you know, some of those other types of um non-billable related services that we've talked a bit about. We have a lot of partnerships with, whether it's schools, whether it's uh, you know, county services, that's, you know, jails and so forth, or other things too that I think are, you know, potential for being diminished.
As well as the, um, maybe the intensity or the amount of services that people are being provided. So um with Medicaid benefits, people have access to many more services with private insurance. Um, they're very limited and there's a lot of prior authorization process as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. And next is Harm Prevention Presentation. Anna Reeds, Health Educator, Central Michigan District Health Department.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. I've got just a quick handout if anyone wants a little bit of literature on harm reduction. Um, but like you said, my name is Anna Reeds and I'm a Community Health Supervisor at Central Michigan District Health Department, where I get the privilege of overseeing our Harm Reduction Program Exchange Central. And our program is a syringe service program with the goal to help stop the spread of HIV and hepatitis C in our community, and then also prevent opioid-related overdose deaths. Um, so when you Google harm reduction, you might find a million different definitions. Um, but it can be described as, you know, a strategy directed toward individuals or groups that aims to reduce the harms associated with a certain behavior. Um, so harm reduction can be anything from wearing a seatbelt when you're in a car or wearing a helmet when you're on a motorcycle or a bike. Even wearing sunscreen is considered harm reduction. Um, but we'll be looking at it through the lens of the opioid epidemic. And the opioid epidemic is a public health emergency. It has drastically increased both overdose deaths in our community and the risk for HIV and hepatitis C infections. The harm reduction model uses well-researched, evidence-based approaches to help reduce the harms of substance use. So the reality is, whether we like it or not, people are going to be used, using drugs in our community. So harm reduction acknowledges this and it acknowledges that, you know, some people might not be ready or able to stop using drugs immediately or even completely. And it offers, you know, proven support methods to get them the help that they need to seek their recovery and their health goals. So there is plenty of data that shows that different harm reduction interventions are effective, but for the sake of time, I'm focusing on safer drug use interventions and naloxone distribution. And for a little bit of level setting, naloxone is the medication that reverses opioid overdoses. And for a little bit of level setting, naloxone is the medication that reverses opioid overdoses. And Narcan is the brand name for that medication. So you might hear Narcan and naloxone used interchangeably. The first stat that I wanted to touch on, for individuals who participate in an SSP, like our syringe service program, they are five times more likely to seek recovery services and three times more likely to stop using substances altogether, compared to people who do not interact with a harm reduction program like ours. So we offer a safe, judgment-free space for individuals to, you know, start taking the baby steps that they need to reach their recovery goals and live a healthier life. SSPs are also associated with an estimated fifty percent reduction in HIV and hepatitis C infections. One of the side effects of the opioid crisis is that there's an increase in injection drug use in our communities. So by giving people who are injecting drugs sterile supplies to do so, we are lessening the risk of them sharing their supplies with others, which then lessens the risk of them getting an HIV or hepatitis C infection. It stops the spread there. Not only is this beneficial to that individual's health and to the health of our overall community, but it saves our community a lot of money. So the CDC found that the average lifetime cost of treating an individual for HIV is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The programmatic cost of one syringe that could have prevented that HIV infection is one dollar. So harm reduction is a good investment. The state of Michigan found that there was a thirty-four percent reduction in overdose deaths between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, and that represents about a thousand lives. This is due to sustained strategic investment in prevention, treatment, recovery, and harm reduction services. Many of these efforts are being funded by the opioid settlement dollars. Our program to buy the syringes and the safe-use equipment, we get opioid settlement dollars from the state of Michigan to buy our supplies. So when these dollars are spent strategically, they can be poured back into the community that has been most impacted by the opioid crisis. And then lastly, for facts, syringe service programs protect first responders and the public by providing safe needle disposal. So we get calls frequently saying, you know, I found these syringes in the park or I found syringes behind a dumpster. And we go and we clean those up and dispose of them properly. We are also giving people who inject drugs Sharps containers and needle clippers so that they can dispose of their syringes properly as well. So there are a lot of common misconceptions around harm reduction programming and that's okay. We're used to those comments and we appreciate any opportunity to, you know, to show people that we're not just doing this work out of the kindness of our hearts. We are, we're very passionate about what we do, but we're doing this because the evidence shows that this is what we need to do to make our community a healthier place. So the most common thing that we hear as a misconception for our program is that harm reduction encourages drug use. We might hear it said, like, you know, you're giving people syringes, you're enabling them to use drugs. And the fact is, they're going to be using drugs with or without the syringe that we provided them. It is more likely that it's going to be a riskier drug use that might lead to a costly infection. And then also the data shows that, you know, individuals that participate in our program, a harm reduction program like an SSP, they're more likely to reduce or stop their drug use. So again, we're linking them with the resources that they need to live a healthier life. Another very common thing that we hear is that naloxone encourages substance users to take more drugs. We might hear it said, like, you know, you're giving out Narcan, you're telling people that they can use as many drugs as they want and you're just going to save them. The research shows that the opposite is true. Narcan isn't actually a deterrent to risky drug use. When you're Narcan, you are put into immediate withdrawal. So people who are addicted to opiates, they want to, you know, like, stay away from withdrawal as much as they possibly can. So the experience is so physically painful and so traumatic to them that Narcan is actually a deterrent to risky drug use. And it's shown that distributing Narcan to individuals who use drugs, that's an effective way to save lives. Another very common thing that we hear is that abstinence is the only way to recovery. Abstinence is great, it works for some, but it's showing that it does not work for all. So harm reduction offers that helping hand to get people to the recovery goals that they have. And then we hear quite often that, you know, people who use drugs, they, they don't want our help. And that's not true. A lot of individuals stop seeking help because they've been judged and treated so horribly for their disease of substance use disorder that the fear and the stigma deter them from engaging in the help that they may need. I've been working in harm reduction for almost six years now and I've never come across a client that was like, this is what I thought I would be doing when I grew up. Like, they don't want to be addicted to substances and harm reduction offers them the helping hand to get to the goals where they want to be. Lastly, I just wanted to share some data specific to Isabella County related to the impact of the opioid crisis. So the Michigan State Overdose Data to Action Dashboard shows that Isabelle County is the thirty-ninth most vulnerable county out of eighty-three in our state in regards to adverse substance use outcomes. So we definitely have some room for improvement there. From August first of twenty-twenty-four to August first of this year, EMS reported administering naloxone to twenty-nine individuals in our county. We know that this number is low. This is just EMS reports. So this does not count general community members who might have administered naloxone or even all first responders that might not be reporting administering naloxone. Our program Exchange Central, we give Narcan directly to individuals who are using drugs. Then when they come back to us for supplies, we ask them, did you use that Narcan at all? And from October first of last year to today, our clients have reported reversing twenty overdoses. So that is people who are using drugs, saving other people's lives because they were prepared when it mattered most. And then unfortunately, in Isabella County, we lost seventeen individuals to an overdose death in twenty-twenty-three. And we lost fifteen individuals in twenty-twenty-two. And we know that these aren't just numbers, these are people's mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, daughters, sons, et cetera. These are loved ones that deserve to be saved. So we can't thank you all enough for making the decision to have an opioid advisory committee. Those settlement dollars can make a meaningful impact in the lives of the people living here in our community most affected by the opioid crisis. So thank you all for the work you do. That's all I have for us to deal about harm reductions. And I'm happy to take any questions if you all have any.
Yeah, I have a question now. Is we, we deal a lot with costs involved in testing. And you refer to drug strips and testing kits. What's difference or what is the, what can the strips do? What can the kits do? Is there a difference in there? Are you talking similar?
I'm kind of similar. So we give out test strips through our program. There are some state-funded programs that have like a drug testing machine. We do not have that, but we give test strips directly to people who are using substances and they can just test a little bit of their substance to see, you know, if you've got meth, you don't want fentanyl in that. It's a different kind of high and you're at a risk for overdose because you're not used to taking opiates. So we give test strips to our clients so they can make more informed decisions on what they're putting in their body. And we ask questions like, you know, like you use the fentanyl testing strip, did you use your substance anyways? Or did, did you discard it? And a lot of our clients say, we didn't use it because that's not the high that they're looking for and they don't want to risk the overdose death. So by giving out test strips, we're able to give the person more autonomy to make a decision whether they want to use that substance or not. And at a lot of our state trainings, we hear story after story of people like testing their substances and saying like, there's xylazine in that, that's a tranquilizer, that's common in the, the drug supply right now. And it causes wounds, like people are saying, I don't want to use that. And that's like a stopping point for people to stop using the drugs that they were using or change their drug use less than it. So we don't give out kits as much as we do, just like the test strips with education on how to use them to give the clients more autonomy and know what's in their supply. Thank you for that question.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Weren't you at the main stage yesterday?
I was not personally, but we were, yes. And we gave out over a hundred fentanyl testing strips to the CMU students. And that's really important because you talk about scary stuff in supplies. Counterfeit pills right now are riddled with, you know, things that shouldn't be in them or that like young adults don't know what's in their pills. And these counterfeit pills look exactly like a prescription opiate or it might be in a party drug like ecstasy where they don't think that they're taking fentanyl and they don't even think to check that, or even cocaine, we're seeing fentanyl and cocaine too. So we're doing education, you know, in our younger population and we're lucky to have the college here to be able to do that outreach. But saying like, you know, you're going to be using party drugs, we know that, we can't stop that, but please like do so safely. Here are some test strips, test your supply, and then here's some Narcan. Where our services are very popular with like the sororities and the fraternities. We do like free STI testing and then harm reduction supplies.
That's great. I was there too with, with Isaac and we went through one whole big box of Narcan. And then we got more and you're getting down on that. So, but lots of the students were very familiar and they even said, well, we know people that had overdoses or died, you know. And, and they all said, well, you know, you never know, you might be able to save somebody's life. Or, and we, we all said, you know, spread the word that you can get Narcan in this county because we'll save lives. I mean, you can't, if you're dead, you can't stop using, right?
Right, right. And if you don't know what you're taking, which is like the case for a lot of, they're called poisonings. Like these students don't know that they're taking a pill that has fentanyl in it. You know, you want to try to prevent that as much as possible. But yeah, thank you for telling them that.
Thank you.
Do you find that the general public is kind of coming around to the idea of harm reduction? I know there was, there's been pushback, you know, why are you helping people do drugs? But I think this bullet point at the top that says SSP participants are five times more likely to access recovery in substance, kind of says it all right there.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely are finding that our programs being more accepted or the, the method of harm reduction is being more accepted. When we do hear comments, you know, like you're enabling drug use or you're encouraging people to take as much as they want with Narcan. Like, we understand where those comments are coming from, but when you get down to the facts, it shows that these interventions work to save lives and that's what we have to lean on. Like this is healthcare, this is meeting people where it's at. So we definitely have seen more buy-in. Talking about students, we have parents come into our health department and get Narcan for their, their first aid kits that they're sending to kids, their, with their kids to college. So I think there's definitely a change in culture. But again, it's just getting the facts out there that this is what's working to save people's lives.
Yeah, I mean, it's data-driven.
Yes, yep, yeah. And SSPs have been around since the eighties, so there's decades of data now proving that these interventions work.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you for hearing me out. Yeah.
And last but not least, Eric Kevowski, Michigan State University Extension.
Good morning. I promised I would keep this short and sweet, but this, I did provide our copy of our twenty-twenty-four annual report for MSU Extension. I know I've seen a lot of people who've been putting a lot of presentations on lately, huh? Making the rounds and sharing about some of the good work that we do. If you're not familiar, we have over two hundred different programs we offer through MSU Extension. We're very, we're very fortunate here in Isabella County because we have nine staff and our educators here. We have on page two, we have, it shows our team. We're lucky to have the amount of educators that we do here, have housed here in Isabella County. So we have specialists in the area. A couple of things that, one of the presentations that I was giving earlier last week, I guess it would be, that I didn't mention in here, but we have to ask the experts. And I, I think that's kind of a really cool point to bring up. Something I haven't talked about in this group before, but they ask the expert is an opportunity if you have questions or maybe pictures of a bug or pictures of a leaf or specific things. Really, as we are the Land Grant University Extension, is that grassroots space where we can connect with the experts on campus, or we also have experts within Extension itself. So if there are any pieces, you know, I know oak wilt is kind of one of the big things right now. We're, we're hearing a lot and seeing a lot about, I'm not the expert in that, so I wouldn't get that ask the expert question. But, you know, that could be an example of if you had a picture and you wanted to share that to, to see what are the resources available, is it actually oak wilt? But something in that space, just to go through our staff really quick. So we have Liz Edmond Link, who's presented here before, she's our 4-H program coordinator. Kara Lynch, our food safety educator, does a lot with serve safe classes, myself. Danielle Shrock, she is our Master Gardener Program instructor. We're trying to breathe a little bit of life back into that program. And so we're, we're very fortunate to have Danielle that is dedicated to our, to our district. She's actually housed in Gladden, but is covering Isabella County as well. We have Elisa Grossman, who is our Extension educator, she is a tribal partner. So she's actually housed at the Saginaw Chippewa Tribal College and doing work in food savant- sovereignty. We have Nony Groves, who is our office manager, Misty Oval, who is Farm Stress Educator, she's presented here in the past as well. Sabrina McGee is our Community Nutrition Instructor and Monica Jean does our field crops. So she is actually will be cooking hot dogs tonight if anybody's around for our field crops demonstration. So again, I, I, I don't want to underplay any of our efforts in this space. But one of, I think a couple of the other highlights may be the embryology partnership that we've had with a lot of the different schools teaching, going into the actual classrooms and we have a couple of illustrations in there of our, our staff going in, working with the kids, showing them that whole process of, you know, with the incubators and they're, they're doing a lot of really cool work in that space. Our 4-H program in Isabella County is actually the biggest in our district. So in twenty-twenty-four, we had five hundred and fifty-two youth that were involved in 4-H and I believe that number is just going to continue to grow. Liz is doing an awesome job in that space. We have two hundred and eighty volunteers and you can see our impact with our youths as well, over two thousand engagements in that space. So I think one last program that I would like to, to highlight was in the Community Nutrition Share Table. That was an opportunity that Sabrina McGee identified working with the school on food waste. And there's a lot of kids that don't necessarily have all of their meals and it's unfortunate. And so Sabrina worked with the school to set up, this is called the Share Table. And so at the Share Table, if you have extra food, non-perishable goods that you don't want as, as a student, you then can go up there and take that and, and you can share it with, with other kids in the school. And so that's been a really well-received, I think the schools, the, the schools appreciated it. I think the kids appreciated it and they probably, you know, in, in an age where you maybe you feel embarrassed about that or something like that, you see other kids that are, that are doing that and it'll more normalize that space in there. So again, I'm happy to share and go through any other pieces, the data points. But I do appreciate all of your support we have for MSU Extension. And hopefully we're doing a good job of outreach and engagement, connecting and making sure that people know about the programs, the services that we offer.
Questions? Just, I have one question. You mentioned food sovereignty. What is, what is that?
Yeah, so it's really working. So one of Elisa's missions is being housed on the Tribal College Campus is to work with individuals about growing their own food. They have a garden over there, she's played a really, she's Kekon Garden, it's called. She plays, she's played a very important role in growing your own food, sharing, seed sharing is another piece. They're doing work in the wild rice space, so they're, they're looking at that. And then teaching others, teaching the youth how to, you know, provide more for themselves in some of those spaces, growing their own food, sharing those food, sharing their food. So it's kind of like a fifty-thousand-foot view of what that space is.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. And with that, we will move into our business items. Your committee reports and number one is consider ratifying and placing on file the August fifteenth two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. The August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents in the adjustments list dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And Administrator Smith, do you want to walk us through each of these?
For the August fifteenth list, the total amount of one hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and one dollars fifty cents. The general fund portion of that is eighty-six thousand three hundred and two dollars forty-five cents. Few of the highlights on this, as we've seen monthly, is the Preston Community Services for nineteen thousand three seventy-five for the monthly equalization contract. Vance Benefit Solutions for the monthly international and ninety-day prescriptions of nine thousand one twenty-four seventy. And then Well Path LLC of twenty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, for the medical service true-up for, uh, three months. Uh, for the correctional facility. These amounts on this first page are the dollar amounts that are five thousand dollars or more. So it's highlighted to the board, and as always, these are sent out prior to the meeting, uh, for questions that the commissioners may have.
Yes, sir. I get up on my soapbox. This is like the third or fourth time I brought up, um, on the body of the interior. Uh, there's one bill to being paid to Millbrook Water Company. And you'll see a number of different departments, uh, paying for that. Uh, you'll see the, the number code right there. It's supposed to comply with the state of Michigan, the Department of Treasury, State of Michigan, uh, uniform, uh, budgeting codes. And they're, they're created to, main, and they're created for all local units of government, county, townships, special units of government. And it's there to have accuracy and transparency. It helps us as county board commissioners do our job so we can evaluate, uh, these costs, you know, down the road. But when you go to that Millbrook, uh, water supply, there's two of them that just, again, stick out like a sore thumb, jury fees, and professional services. All the other departments are in supplies, which I would say that is correct. And I commend those departments that, that follow the state statutes. But those two continue to, uh, frustrate me, cause I bring them up and they just stick out like a sore thumb. And I, I'm wondering why, why do we do that? I mean, the code can be adapted to any particular need that a department may have for, uh, tracking or, or what have you. But I would ask administration to, uh, converse with, uh, the departments at the, for those two departments, and provide an explanation of why, uh, they divert from the uniform chart of accounts. Um, and also, when we get down to the audit, cause I've heard before, it's done because it's never been cited in the audit. Well, the audit is a lot of moving parts, and it's something they may have missed. I would like to have an opportunity to meet with the auditor this year. I've been collecting these invoice lists, and this one here is minor. I mean, we're not talking big dollars, but there's been more egregious ones that I, I have also collected, but I, I think I need an answer. I think it's the right thing to do, and I think this board needs an answer, uh, for that.
If I may answer that question, uh, we had a meeting with the new auditors to go over the upcoming audit. Making sure that we had everything put in place and ready to go and what they expect. This issue was brought up. They said it is not material in any nature, that it is part of the jury fees that the trial court has been coding for a while now. And so that is just their way to recognize expenses related to jury fees. So the auditors were made aware of this, and they said it has no material impact on the financial statements. And they had no problems with this being funded out of jury fees.
So you don't mind if I meet with the auditors once they're on site?
As long as the full board has every opportunity as well. If we start having individuals going in there, then you start crossing over into operations. But you, every, every commissioner will have that opportunity to have a question, answer with them, cause they'll reach out to you. And they'll wanna know your thoughts and concerns and stuff like that. So that'd be more than happy when it comes time to audit time to, you can ask those questions that you have.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, I have a question on the Well Path LLC, and I think I know that this, this medical service contract true-up. I, I think that, uh, I know we pay a monthly fee to Well Path, and then this just kinda cleans up if they do, anything beyond that monthly contract or?
That's where I understand your question, for sure.
Well, the, uh, medical service contract two-up, that is a part of the monthly fee that we pay to Well Path. Is it, is that an additional fee?
Nothing that we've contracted with, that's gotta come out of the Well Path side, so. Yeah. I'm not, I'm not familiar with this, it's gotta be part of the Well Path.
Okay.
I, I, I will tell you, like, we are at the, the renewal phase, but we are working diligently to, um, to find other alternate opportunities that, that, so we're bringing something forward here soon to the board, so.
Right. So in the answer to that, what we'll do is when we get back, we'll dig up that actual invoice and see if we can get an answer and send it out to the board.
I'm not familiar with.
I didn't see, see the sheriff on that. I'm assuming that is with the true-up or three-month true-up. So I think it's, you have your contractual.
Oh, I think it was extension, probably, yeah.
Oh, is it four-one-twenty-five to six-thirty?
Yeah, that was an extension. I, I apologize. I thought I misunderstood, so. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I, I thought I heard something else, but that was an extension. We did an extension, and then they've been good with that, um. But, you know, not getting into the weeds here, we've, we've, we've got, um, some concerns, we gotta make some changes.
No, I struggle to articulate my question.
No, no, I didn't hear you. You, you said it correctly. I just didn't hear you correctly. So, it's that transmission receiver thing, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, the next one for the August twenty-second, total amount of invoices, one hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars fifty-three cents. General fund portion out of that is sixty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars thirty-nine cents. We have a couple of large ones. We've got Dell Marketing L O P of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five for new computers for several departments, for the I T department. The bi-weekly animal control contract to hats in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. And then we have, uh, manpower for weekly contracted labor for the recycling facility of six thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
Any questions on that? Voiceless.
Okay, next, the last one is we have the adjustments list, and this is the list of any, uh, entry errors that were made or invoices were added to void late fees or to get early discounts. And what you'll see on this page in a quarter, there was just one invoice that was, uh, changed too quick, to correct an entry error, and that was a thirty cent error. So, um, kudos to the, uh, people in putting this A P in there that only one error, and the rest were just to avoid late fees for the typical corn food service, wind telecom, city mall pleasant, and consumers' energy.
Any questions? All right, we will move that item to next week's regular board meeting. And we'll move to item two, which is consider approving the budget request for fiscal year twenty-six childcare funds in the amount of two million two hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And authorize the board chairperson to sign the form D H S twenty-ninety-one. And we have Court Administrator Carrie Curtis with us.
Good morning. So we are here again for another, um, year of the childcare fund application and budget. It is not dramatically different from last year. Um, we have made a couple of adjustments, which I talk about in the staff report. But the big things this year are, we don't have to report income anymore to offset that, because the law changed, which disallowed us to collect from parents or guardians or children for cost of care. So that became a hundred percent responsibility of basically the government. Um, we get half ba- or half back through the childcare fund, so, but we also don't report the income, so it sort of balanced itself out there. Um, the other thing that is different this year is we no longer can claim any portion of the referees' wages or fringes, um, due to the fact that they have determined that is not an eligible expense. So that reduced it slightly in that regard, but we can claim a little bit of our accountant's expenses. So, it, it balanced out to very close to the same amount, um, that we have currently approved.
Any questions? Okay, I guess we have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item three is consider approving the motorola acceptance document for four body worn cameras. Camera units at cost of eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Hello. I have an opportunity. So, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, um, we were authorized to get body cameras for all the road patrol deputies. Uh, we used some grants and different things. At that time, uh, we spent ninety-five thousand dollars for those twenty-five cameras. That was back in two thousand nineteen. When we got those, you know, it's always that, you know, the, the deputies are like, oh, they're just watching us. And they realized pretty quick the value they have, right? Not only to the community, but to the officers, to the courts, to the prosecutor. Uh, they were very successful. We had some major incidents that, um, they played a heavy key role in. Those body cams were a motorola S I five hundred model. Uh, they, um, they were shoulder mic and camera was a great system, worked great. But they ended life with us here recently, uh, as all things come down to play. We didn't really go into the, uh, deep trying to figure this out, cause we didn't have the deputies, we had so much else going on. Uh, but then we introduced the radio tower program or project. And as we're doing that, um, we asked for Bluetooth lapel mics for our radios. Uh, and I get a call from Motorola. So, if you back up about a year and a half, Motorola asked me to meet with, uh, Motorola representatives from all over the world. I had to sign a non-deposure agreement. They wanted to know what the cameras. Had this huge meeting with them, told them what I liked, what I didn't like. Um, I don't know if that played a role or not, but they turned around and said, listen, we, we'll swap those out, no cost. We'll give you the new cameras that we're making at no cost. I, I can't imagine, they're probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty-five cameras. Uh, the only thing we need is the setup and the, uh, implementation to put it together for the eleven thousand dollars or whatever it is there and change. I asked them, I said, what if we have deputies come on board, you know, six months, a year, two years down the road? Every time we wanna activate, one of six hundred dollars for storage here. That's a pretty good deal. Um, so I'm trying to think, okay, where do I have money? The only place I have money is commissary. I know we pulled commissary money out, so there's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in there right now. Uh, we missed the deadline for the M M R M A grant for July, but it's set, it's, it's in, um, for our body scanner that we put in. I anticipate getting that grant, uh, but it's October when they close the next session. So we'll, we've got about thirty days, but we'll know on that. And we are ready, uh, at the point, um, this month to, uh, decommission a half a dozen cars, um, that are ready to go. And we all agreed to put that back in the commissary. So there's plenty of commissary funds there. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the work myself and a sheriff, the animal patrol officer, um, even the school resource officer who's dealing with children. We need to get cameras back on. They're just, they're just too valuable, they're too, too important. I can tell you this morning, uh, whether it was right place, wrong time, or wrong time, right place. I ended up with, uh, some other law enforcement searching the house and barns and weapons drawn on a case this morning on my way to work. So, without a camera, that, it just feels like you're like, you go to work without your pants on, on maybe, like, you just, something's not there. So it really, um, we really need to get cameras back, and I think this is a great opportunity. I think they've got a good camera again. Um, I just, for eleven thousand dollars, it seems like a no-brainer to me, but, uh, so I'm, for any gentleman, they asked for less support.
Uh, great use of commissary funds, in my opinion. I'm a big believer in body worn cameras, and I know you are too. I appreciate that.
I can tell you, I did transport to the court back, I worked at the court all day yesterday, so that's really good to use that, right? It's, it's definitely, uh, commissary, uh, funds can be, you know, helpful to plans.
Questions?
They be used when you transport out of the county as well.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, I do think it's beneficial, necessary. My correction staff have body cams, they're a different model. The Motorola bought a company and they work really well, um, these ones, uh, we still have at the road. So, myself, the under sheriff, the animal patrol officer who encounters a lot of people, weren't upset sometimes. Um, and then we got our school resource guy that's dealing with juveniles. I mean, it's just, it's just a very, a huge safety now, but it's good for the community. It's good for evidentiary value. It's just good awareness, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move that item to next week's, uh, regular session. And item four is consider approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six emergency management performance grant. Work agreement and authorize the board chairperson to sign this.
So this is the annual work agreement between, uh, us locally and, uh, the M S P, American Family Division. Uh, it's something that you guys have seen the last ten years, partially funds. Our American Family Coordinator position, uh, we do have the exact percentage yet, because the state was just awarded from federal government the grant. So they're still working their things out. But typically, it's between thirty to thirty-six. Last year it was eleven. They're thinking it's probably gonna be around eleven percent again, so. Uh, again, it's just a work agreement, gives us task lists to do that, for the state.
Questions? Something for us.
Yep, you have.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And item five, consider approving the agreement for extension services in Michigan State University and Isabelle County for fiscal year two thousand one sixty, the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. And authorize for chairperson to sign the same.
Yeah, so the, uh, M O A for, uh, this year, uh, thanks. There, there is one adjustment that we do have to make. Thanks, Brian, to, for catching that. Uh, we do have it updated, and we'll have it for the board, but the termination, we had the incorrect year on that, so we'll have that updated. This is the, pretty much the standard M O A that we've had. Uh, I appreciate Chris and Brian meeting with us, working through a couple of different things. Uh, we've worked hard to try and keep the dollar amount, it's both the same, recognizing Isabelle County budget. Uh, just for the other backside of that story, I do have to negotiate with the university with this too, because we're essentially behind in Isabelle County. Uh, but they've been supportive. They wanna continue to, to support our four H program, our staff here too. So, um, it, it looks essentially the same, uh, with the exception to one, uh, uh, adding some, uh, dollars to the Consumer Board Master Gardener Program, uh, over here for seventeen hundred dollars, forty, or, one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. The reason we came up with that number is we thought that if we are able to work with, uh, the county and remove some of our storage stuff out of the storage unit, uh, trying to be fiscally responsible. If we can get our stuff out of that storage unit, that would essentially save that cost, um, trying to remove some of that. So, that's, that's actually the only difference in, in this year.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Kevowski?
Dollars well spent for services to county residents, uh, to safety.
Yeah, I agree. From your presentation earlier, five hundred and fifty-two four H participants.
To the board, what you'll see is the error that was made is on page three, and the term determination. That budget year twenty-five and twenty-five listed twice, that'll be corrected for the next regular meeting when the formal with, with, formally approved this.
And just, like I said, a thousand dollars spent, also the, what we get in the agricultural community and schools. I said, you know, we got that fire spot, or, and now we're with new programs, the mental issues. And it's a very stressful job that's ever been focused before, but, um, it's a tough business, and, uh, having information is big. And that's what the, that's what the spy provides, so. Very well spent on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we'll move that item to next week's meeting. And item six is consider approving annual delegation of school plan review and inspection authority for Mount Pleasant Public Schools and authorize for chairperson to sign the same. Mr. Deport.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I brought a few of these to, to you in the past. This is, um, the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, um, requesting, uh, local inspection services to be formed here. Um, under state law, inspection services are performed at the state unless there is a request for annual delegation. Um, last September, you may recall, I came in front of the board, because, uh, the forum allowed for a duly, uh, represent, a representative of the county, being myself, um, to sign these documents. Since then, the State of Michigan has changed it and requires now the, um, highest elected official be the one that signs it. So the chairman would need to sign these things. So here I am again in front of you, or, or here I am again in front of you for this. Um, Mount Pleasant Public Schools, I believe, is building their, uh, um, uh, their construction home that they build at annual basis. They're looking for inspections for that. So just school district has signed, I believe, school district, yes, school district has signed. So we just need a signature here and then move this on to state.
So that's our building trades class?
Yes, building trades class. Yep. Yep.
And it's always good to have local input in the community overseeing that because they're in the community. So.
Yeah, as well, you know, we've talked about it many times before. State of Michigan is just slow. It takes forever for us people to get inspections, who need inspections from the state. And we're performing inspections, you know, twenty four to forty eight dollars. So we're able to provide that little better service for them at a cheaper cost than the state is.
That's all I was gonna say too. What that night, remember you saying that?
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Where's the trades class house?
I don't know. They haven't. I don't know. They haven't disclosed to us. They haven't applied for any permits or anything to us. They just they're going to be doing one. The last couple they've done have been over towards the Horizon Park, the Sweeney area in the south.
Where's the classroom though? Do they have a classroom of?
I don't know that. I don't know where their classroom is. I assume somewhere at the tech center. I'm not. I'm not real sure at the school.
Boy, wouldn't it be nice if they could get those kind of three D printers at print houses?
It would be wonderful.
That's that's big learn about things that are, you know, coming.
Yeah, funding that the students in those classes are doing a little bit less work than they used to do. We're not really sure why. They're coming in on some days and doing some work. And then there's other contractors that are coming in and doing a good bulk of the work. Where I was talking to a couple of my inspectors who've been through the program and are now working for us where they did all the work on them homes as students. So there's a little bit less. I don't know if it's a timing thing. I don't know if there's liability of some sort. I'm not real sure why, but they're still getting good experience and they're still putting people into the into the trades. So that's a good thing.
Just saw somebody yesterday that I could have asked that question too. Maybe next time. Okay.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move that item to next week's regular session brings us down to item seven, consider approving a two percent COLA for the year two thousand twenty six for each of the affected employees and prosecutor's office. And Dorothy, did you want to speak to this?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is just a request. And we missed the deadline to reclassify a couple of employees, three in particular. And so Mr. Kowalcheck just wanted to kind of ensure that they would have some kind of increase as it will now take like almost a year and a half could be able to make a a reclassification change because it would be till next October. So the new with the new program. So just asking for the COLA that stated that's being given to the other employees be given to those three employees in our office. So Mr. Paulcheck kind of wrote it out there pretty well. He is unfortunately down in Florida, unfortunately for him, but he had he has his first grandchild just just arrived. So he said he thought the staff report could speak for itself. So I don't know if you have any questions. But we've been we've been under budget for the last couple of years with, you know, with staffing issues. So as far as, you know, going on your budget or whatever.
Yeah. My only real concern is that once we go through process, I know there's a couple other people that want to want to redress it. So you know, even there's well laid out here, but if we open it up and get it open enough for everybody, so then others two or three out there, so I would like to come for this again and reopen.
Dan, oh, the purpose of the classification study was to make sure we had equity with the larger market and equity internally. And this is a really staying away from the employer, making those decisions by having a outside independent. And I guess I question whether or not we want to make different judgments at this point because I think we would basically negate the classification study. And there are other people too that are probably watching what active action we take on this request. That doesn't mean that these employees are not valued. They are. We have good employees, but we want to make sure that we're fair again internally and with the market and the Amy, the cell study hopefully accomplish that.
And I I think we have an internal compensation and classification review committee. Yes. That was opposed to this. No, go ahead. I'm sorry. And I think, you know, we set that committee up to take that onus off of the board because board, we didn't feel qualified to make some of these decisions. I think now that's the process that we put in place. I think you have to follow it.
And if I just may expand on that a little bit. The this was not forwarded on the compensation committee because they it was past the deadline, you know, we've got certain deadlines at which we need to get it in the budget and due to the process and everything like that. So I did share this with the compensation committee to make sure if there's any issues or concerns that I may have missed on this and they did agree that this, you know, should not be adopted or approved. When we look at giving raises, we got to remember everybody in the study is supposed to be put in grades and steps. And so it's really not two percent per individual. We're raising the whole grade up, the whole the whole structure up two percent. So yes, they are getting two percent, but some are getting two percent plus a step. So everybody has a certain position in the excuse me, in there. By taking positions that are redlined and give them a two percent, then the grade, the grid never catches up to them and stuff. So what I did inform at a meeting that I had on August fourteenth with Dorothy and Mr. Kowalcheck that the issue also stems from when Amy South placed these positions into the grade. There was on the prosecuting attorney's office that there was some questions on where they were placed. And so where they were placed in the study reflects this red line and stuff. And I said, we'd more than welcome to start the process January of next year. So we make the March first deadline. So there is a process. If they get the market studies and get all their other comparables out, I will make sure that it's all there. Then I would take it to that committee at that point for a recommendation to the board on whether we think that those positions and, you know, need to be adjusted because there was an adjustment. There was a couple of positions that were kind of flip flopped on there and stuff. So that is kind of it in a nutshell. On not saying that they don't deserve the money. It's just that to follow the process. You know, we need to kind of hold it on. And plus, we have another twelve, I want to say that are at least partially, if not fully redlined as well. And those employees have been notified and it was also in that implementation strategy where it was noted in there that there were going to be positions in the study rather for the that pay grid to catch up.
Thanks for that explanation. I wasn't quite sure how the COLA worked in compared to raises to the the grade instead.
Okay. No questions, comments? So I don't see the personally, I would not move this item forward, but we'll do whatever the board feels is appropriate. Generally, we move everything from this meeting to the little session, but we're if we're not in support of it. I don't see any sense of moving it to the regular session.
I don't sense a general consensus to want to take it up.
My only thing would be is if Kowalcheck wanted to have a moment in front of the board to present his case again, would be my only reason I'd move it forward to think about it. I know what other people's thoughts are. I'd like for him to be provided with that opportunity if he so chooses. Do we have to make the decision today or Friday?
We can decide to move it to the full board dependent on when Mr. Kowalcheck can can be here. I don't know if he's here next week or not.
He should be here next week. Yes.
Okay.
I guess. My I guess I'm just I respect the fact that you want to have them, but to be prepared, the staff report and I'm, you know, I don't know what what's going to change, but I understand.
Right.
Right, but I see where did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
And I'm asking Mr. Neeford as part of the compensation in the raging committee for your.
If this does move forward to the board next week, I would say if you're considering two staff members who are redlining, I have two in my office. And those two in my office, I've already walked through and explained to them why, what's happened, how they've moved. I think the fairness, if they're going to do it to two red liners, you would do it to all of them. But then we completely make an unfair situation because we varied from the policy before we've even implemented it October. I would say if you're moving it to next week, at least consider those.
And for that reason, I would be hesitant to even move it forward. But that's just my my feeling.
I'm I'm not set in that opinion at all. I just I'm always willing to give a person a voice. I I do. He did a very good job on on the report. But I I'm not, you know, push this this board to move it forward.
I'm not going.
Not going to.
Let's just go around to a check. Who wants to move forward?
You know, I've always favored employee positions, but on this one, I just can't see. We spent good money on the the study and I think we need to follow and implement the study and its policies, procedures. So I would now want to move it forward.
I think that we should not move this forward just because it complicates things. As I said, we to make it fair, you'd have to open it up to everybody. And we're actually trying the board to help with some of these wage study decisions. We hire administrator to do those decisions. I find out getting involved and micromanaging departments. It's not a good usually ends up a little bit of chaos.
It got kind of messy in the past.
Those positions came.
Not only this.
Definitely.
Committee, but other organizations that I've been in, it's it does get what's before it gets involved in those micromanaging. It usually gets really messy. So not that there's you know, arguments be made, but there is a process. So
Mr. Murray, you know?
Yeah, I think it's telling that we haven't even started hardly this process and jumping in there. However, you know, this issue is I I wouldn't really like going forward, putting it forward anymore.
Sure. Yeah, well, what's your feeling?
No, I always feel that every employee has a voice and they should be heard. I do understand that we're just getting into this new process. And I will leave this to the administrators.
Thank you, Dorothy. And item eight, consider approving Isabella County two thousand twenty six holiday schedule as presented.
This is all the employees' favorite agenda item here, the setting of the holiday schedule for next year. These are all on the personnel manuals and stuff. So no dates are different with, you know, we do have the observance of the Fourth of July taking place of Friday, July third of two thousand twenty six.
So same as last year.
Same as last year.
Yep. And was it last year or the year before that we added Juneteenth?
Year before.
Questions?
Just the comment that usually the July fourth, usually the board takes the day up and works if it's close. So we kind of messed that up last time. So we just want to make sure that it's in there. We missionary, so any brought that our attention. So we it's very important to be at the lake.
It will be duly noted when the board adopts their schedule with the organizational, January of the July.
It's fun to bring that up.
We're aware.
A little bit of grief about that. Wonderful. Okay, we'll move that item to next week's meeting and our final item is number nine, consider approving participation in the proposed national opiate settlement agreements with Purdue Pharma, the Sackler family, Sandoz, the generic manufacturers listed within the staff report and authorized administrator controller to execute all necessary documents to ensure Isabella County's participation and receipt of funds is further recommended to consider approving resolution number twenty twenty five dash ten, which reflects updates to the state subdivision agreements to consolidate prior agreements and mandates annual reporting to Michigan Attorney General beginning fiscal year two thousand twenty six. Authorized Board Chairperson and County Clerk to sign the same.
Sorry for the long motion, but I wanted to make sure I had all the relevant information every day. As you're all aware, and you've went through many of these on these settlement agreements. It is just basically authorizing me to say we want to participate in the Purdue Pharma, Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family, Sandoz. And I do have listed under the financial impact, there's seven, Alvegin, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Indivior, Violent, Sun, and Zidis. So the Purdue Pharma and Strackler family, that is a seven point five billion dollar settlement over fifteen years. The Sandoz is a two hundred and seventy five million dollar and that's just going to be paid in a one year. And then the seven is a seven hundred and twenty million, one to ten years. The information that I've received and I got it after I prepared this report that it depends if they keep the same amount of entities to participate that believe that the Purdue Pharma Sackler family portion for Isabelle County would be like three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it's a nice chunk of money that we'd be getting. The second part of this is the resolution, since there was a change in the state subdivision agreement that the board had signed on a few years ago. This just basically outlines that reporting will be required of all the entities to the state on the expenditures of funds beginning fiscal year twenty six. So we'd be working with the same Rubus on the two of them. And then Brown and Greer would be for the Sandoz. So those are like the two differing ones. You've already worked with Rubus on the Johnson and Johnson, CBS, Walgreens. You worked with Brown and Greer on a Jansen settlement. And then again, Rubus for the third one. So kind of ran the whole gamut on who the board has already have agreements with us.
It'll be interesting to see the eventual attorney general's listing of what the county's all going to receive. I think this is going to put us over the four million dollar mark after eighteen years, which is more in the corpus that we can draw the interest from for the advisory, opioid advisory committee to have for grants for services. Opioid advisory uh committee to have for grants to for services.
Yeah, I should, I I meant to ask uh Director Holl, because he's the one that gave me the information, he sent me an email over the weekend to say, I noticed you guys haven't. Participated yet, I told him we were gonna be doing that today and he goes, what I seen, it's gonna be like three hundred and forty thousand or something like that, so. Um kind of excited to get the process going, the uh. The Sandoz and the Purdue Pharma have a deadline of September thirtieth, so this gives me plenty of time, because now all I have to do is just. Uh send in a participation sheet and uh fill that in and then the other one with the uh. Um Alvegin is in October.
Brad, Mister Hall, let you know about that.
Yeah, well, it was nice that he gave me the dollar figure and stuff, and yes, and what we had, what we figured out too is I was missing some of the emails. Because they had the former administrative controller on some of these emails. And so luckily, some of them picked up the generic admin one and then that got forwarded, and so that's why. Uh I I should have been on this like a month or two earlier, but I just started getting emails and getting the accesses into the system for this.
Yeah, I think, you know, I got my text, I think they're majority back about, we had the attorney. Look at this and decided since it's similar, they were not required to do a special meeting or to. Fill it in, fill it through extension for for negotiation, so it's pretty similar and I think everybody agreed. They just bring us forward and that's what we're searching for, just do to regular order of business, so.
We're being nimble, right?
Right, we're being nimble.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't think they disagree, man, I'm having. So anyway, well.
Thank you very much, this will be nice to get these. Uh three wrapped up.
The other questions, comments? Then we'll move that to next week's evening. And that completes our business items for today and. Bring us down to general public comments. You want the general public comment announcement, yes, sir. I wanna thank uh administration for expeditiously getting the uh announcement for the opioid advisory committee. Correspondence went out to those agencies and organizations that are being responsible for appointment for nominees for. One or two members each and also I noticed on the county website, the three at large positions. Uh have been listed. I would like to throw my hat in, I know it's the chairman's uh option with the board approval. Uh of being the board pointe to that committee, there's still work to be done and generally with the process and. Somebody else wants to step in, that's fine too, but I'm willing to put in the time and effort. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Yes, sir, just real quick, I know the dates are coming up, I'd like to repeat them for the conservation district. Uh Denver, Toldi, for having the hazardous waste, electronic waste at the county fairgrounds. Tyree Thackey will be October fourth. And also I'd like to mention coming up. Uh the Sunday Labor Day, the thirtieth, we got to feel some such environment, so if we haven't done celebrating the sex with any help. We uh we still got another event.
Any other announcements?
Yes, sir, I would also like to uh thank Chris Whitmer's uh department, uh you know, I know that. Doing these budgetary numbers and everything for twenty twenty six, coming into this position, uh January twelfth, Brian. Uh I could give you both departments have done an outstanding job.
I would also like to shout out the paper, so within like a half an hour of submitting. The stuff for their ad for the the committee, they had a little blurb on their uh article on their website already about it. And so I was kind of impressed, I would have had a hour to head it going, but thank you for your time, comments, I appreciate it. And thank you for your comments earlier, we appreciate it regarding getting the stuff on the agenda.
Any other announcements? I have a couple, the Cultural Recreation Committee finally is up and running, we got up. Off to a little bit of a slow start this year, uh we met last week, a couple new members on that. That board works in conjunction with what they call a sports flex board. The sports flex board does kind of the daily operations, the uh CRC is more of an oversight board. Uh but those two boards run the Mark Nice Arena, Maury Courts and the Maury Gymnastics Center. Um all built and supported with state private and tribal grants and gifts. So no cost to taxpayers, it's a really a wonderful facility. Um we did approve uh Union Township is gonna kind of take the lead on a. Shared drive with Renaissance uh School Academy. Uh to make that pick up and drop off at Renaissance, a lot easier to share, I haven't said, because that's a, it's a real problem. On Isabella Road, so it'll make a loop around that school. Uh we did agree to uh start the initial phase of the project planning and engineering phase. Uh for that project, so. Uh progress made there, uh the other one is uh the administrator Smith and myself and Katie Laura. Uh the Michigan Development, uh Matt Saginaw for Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works for. The CEO Kristen Wenzel thanked uh officials from Isabel County. And Saginaw County for how that transition is going, uh Isabel County is becoming provinciale. Uh of Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. Uh which will save that organization a significant amount of money that they then can put back into. Uh programs and bring county a little bit of money to indirect costs. Uh but our, the way we figured indirect cost was cheaper than the way Saginaw County does it, that's. Not that Saginaw County was doing anything inappropriate, it's just we figure it differently and it's, it'll save the organization money. Um we viewed a lot of their programs, I have. Uh the two thousand twenty four Michigan Economic Analysis Report, I can email that to all commissioners. Interesting report, the other thing, having worked in skilled trades for the last forty five years. I found it interesting, Michigan Works is ranked number four in the US. For US Department of Labor certified scholarships, so. We've known that uh we're gonna short. Uh new people coming to skilled trade, we've known that for twenty years, uh Michigan Works is is. Trying to get people trained and certified, it's still great, so. Um good meeting, and that is all I have. That, for motion return?
Don't move, Marito.
We've reported, so we are adjourned at eleven thirty seven.